All right. Good evening, Council. We are night two for our boards and commission and authorities interviews. And it is six o'clock and we are ready for our first interview. And who do we have first up, city clerk?
Our first interview tonight will be Sherri Allmond.
Excellent. Okay. Thank you. If you can bring her on up, please. All right. Sherri, are you there? Okay, I don't see or hear Sherri.
I see her. She's on there.
I see her too.
Yeah, for whatever reason, I don't. Okay. Is there a way that we can move Brian off the screen? At least he's on mine. If not, hi Sherri, can you hear? There's Sherri.
There she is.
Great, thank you. Hello. Sherri, should we call your Dan or Sherri? What do you want to be tonight? Your name says Dan, but. Can Sherri hear us?
I cannot hear.
Hello Sherri. All right. Okay, what can we do to communicate to Sherri that we see her, we just don't hear her? Hello Sherri?
She can't hear us.
No, not at all. We don't hear her either. Hi, Colleen, is there a way to contact her, let her know that we don't hear her?
I'm on it.
Great, thank you. All right, she is reapplying for the planning commission. Sherri, do you hear us yet?
Since she's scheduled at 6:10, she may not realize that we want her early.
I think, well, she's been brought up though, so that should tell her something. Hello Sherri, I'm gonna put up a sign that says hello, not my computer, says hello Sherri. I wonder if she can see.
Please, Susan, who's in the lobby, if we just want to do her.
Does she show up? Did Susan show up now, Colleen?
I don't see her in the lobby.
Okay.
Oh, really?
No.
That's why we're moving on to Sherri.
We don't have anyone in the lobby.
Sherri, can you see me? Oh, I heard her. Sherri, can you hear us?
We heard you, Sherri.
We heard her.
We can hear you. We do have.
She can't hear us.
Right.
Yeah. Can't hear you. Can you hear me?
Oh, I hear, yes.
You can hear me?
Yes.
Can't hear you, okay.
Okay.
Better be careful what I say. I'm sorry. Said it was working. Hang on a minute. No. Rats. No.
All right, Sherri.
It's not ideal, but could you ask the questions via phone and then she can respond to all of us?
Well, let's, let's give her a chance here to try to get on. Okay.
I'm sorry, I can't get it to work.
It's okay, we hear you. Okay. Do we have Susan Thornton yet?
No, we don't.
Do we have Frank Atwood?
No, we have nobody in the lobby.
Nobody, okay.
Looks like her screen just froze, Sherri's screen just froze too, so maybe if she.
I'm gonna call her.
Yeah.
I'm gonna call.
Thank you. All right, looks like she's trying to get back in. Sherri, can you hear us?
I'm, I'm in this time.
Yeah, do you hear us?
I don't know what happened. It worked earlier, so. And I am not Dan Allmond. It says Dan Allmond, that is not me.
Right. And we do hear you, but your screen is frozen, but I think if you can hear us, okay, I'm gonna go ahead with the questions.
Okay.
All right, well, thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, thank you for reapplying for the planning commission. You know, I'm Sherri, of course. So why have you decided to reapply for the planning commission?
The reason I reapplied is, one, the last few years have gone very quickly. And I've been an alternate for two and a half years. And during that time, it has been exciting and also challenging and sometimes scary, depending on the topic.
Yeah.
I would like to be able to give Littleton a return on the investment that you've made of me already with the last two and a half, almost three years that I've been on the board and on the commission. And I feel like I've just got to the point where I can really start stepping it up and be effective. And I guess most importantly, I just feel it is an honor to serve our city and our citizens, and I enjoy it.
And what have you learned during your time on the board?
I've learned that I don't know as much as I thought I did. I have learned a lot about, one, our citizens and what they think. I've learned a lot about the zoning codes. I've learned a lot about, I should say, I knew, I thought I knew a lot about comprehensive planning, but it's been a, a very refreshing and a little bit different process, more modern, I guess, with the new technology, since I've been in really actively in the field, government area. So it's, it's been exciting.
Yeah, cool. And what would you say is your greatest accomplishment while serving on the, on the commission?
The greatest is just, I think, learning. Learning what's going on in our city, learning what our citizens really expect of us, learning, trying to learn what your goals, and I think I know those. Learning more and more about those every day.
Yeah.
It has been not terribly, it is a steep learning process, I should say, not.
It is.
An ongoing learning process.
And how will you continue to contribute to the commission?
Well, I would like to continue to contribute by, one, now that I'm more knowledgeable, I'm feeling more comfortable being able to give input, speak up. I think there's some good opportunities this year or this next round because we have a little bit of a change in our board makeup and we'll have some new leadership. So, you know, well, we have good, really good leadership now. It's always exciting and I think there's opportunity when you have new leadership. Because we'll be having, getting a new chairman, we'll have a new member, and I look forward to that as well.
Excellent, excellent. And what do you enjoy most about being on the commission?
I enjoy learning about our city just more and more and what's going on and being involved in what's going on. And I feel like I'm much more knowledgeable about where I live than I've ever been. So it's great to be able to participate because, you know, it was really hard in the past, like you, you know, having demanding careers, it was very hard. So now I have a less demanding career and I can really, you know, contribute more to the community.
Excellent, excellent. Well, what, is there anything that you would change about the commission?
There, I, I have some ideas. I don't know what is allowable, I guess. I guess we need to have some conversations. I would love for us to have an opportunity to get to know each other. It, it's been a little bit strange in that we don't really get a chance to, to know each other. You know, we kind of know a little, but not, not nothing. And I don't mean that in a way where we would develop groupthink or anything, but just to understand where fellow commissioners are coming from. So if we can have an opportunity to just meet or get to know each other outside of our meeting. And I have some ideas about, I, I don't know, I guess I'll ask these questions hopefully when I'm reappointed. But if we can have ways to better align or participate with other boards, and I know we're doing that through the commission and it's great when we get to have the housing, metro housing come to our meeting, like the other night on affordable housing, or we've had, you know, economic development or whomever, but it'd be nice if we could have, be appointed, I guess, or say, you have certain planning members who maybe be aligned or assigned to the different boards. I'm not sure if that's okay, but it's something I'd like to throw out there.
Well, thank you. I think those are good ideas. I know when, when I was on the commission, I was on there for many years in the chair and stuff, we, we did retreats. And I don't know if Karina did it when she was on there, but they were really helpful for the members to really to come together. We would argue things out until late into the night. It was a lot of fun, so. Well.
Okay.
Thank you for reapplying. And if, and if you were not to be appointed, you, you would consider being placed on another board or commission?
I would.
Great.
And that would be housing. My second choice.
A choice.
And I, I hope that I'm reappointed and I hope I've served you well. I know it's been a learning curve and I appreciate the opportunity and I would be honored to continue on.
All right. Well, well, thank you very much and you have a good evening.
I didn't ask you about any of your goals, but I guess we're probably out of time because.
Yeah, we're moving around long.
Okay.
Do you have a question? Go ahead. Did you have a question, Sherri?
I, no, I'm just saying the ULUC I know is top priority. And I didn't get a chance to ask you what some of the others are, but that's okay.
Thank you, Sherri.
Thanks very much.
You have a good night.
You too.
All right.
Bye.
All right, Colleen, do we have someone up?
We don't. Susan Thornton is having an issue. I'm sending her a new invite, just one moment.
All righty. Nothing like technical stuff. So I hear Tiger Wood had a car accident today. It was pretty severe.
Yeah, I saw that too.
Yeah, yeah, trying to kill airtime.
It was beautiful outside today.
Yes, it was.
I literally just came back from a run, so I'm, I'm trying not to see myself.
What's amazing how quick six o'clock creeps up on us too. You know, I'm out running around trying to get stuff done and all of a sudden like, yikes, I'm running out of time here. All right. Colleen, do we have anybody in the queue?
We do not right now. I'm working on it.
All right. Well, one other thing, Council, that we want to bear in mind too, when we start making appointments on Thursday, is that for the reappointments, for those that are alternates, you know, about moving them up or not, or appointing somebody ahead of them, a new person. So that, that's something else to consider as, as you look at your folks, the reappointments.
Still waiting there.
So, and, and that's also true for like members who are already on a border commission, who's an alternate. You know, do we move them up to a full voting member and a new person replaced as an alternate? So those, those are other things to keep in mind. So Scott, have you had, are you going to court these days?
Mostly our court appearances are virtual still. Some of the municipal courts have been in person for a while. But yeah, for the most part, we're on Teams and Zoom and WebEx and all of that. And I don't see any sign of that changing anytime soon. Some of my colleagues who do criminal defense work are occasionally doing trials in person, but pretty infrequently.
So, so when you do a Zoom court, you put on a tie and a jacket and still have your shorts on, or?
No, I throw the whole suit on. Just in case. Yeah.
All right.
Still waiting, Mayor.
Still waiting. And Karina, you're, you're still remote, I take it, as far as work?
She's there, I think, in person.
We are, we are.
Are you, like, like so many days a week, or?
No, no, we're fully remote. We're trying to come up with a plan to get back into the office, probably in the fall. But even that will be, it'll be a different model. They're, they're contemplating a different model of what back to the office looks like. So I think there's quite a fair share of people that will remain remote indefinitely.
Yeah, that, that whole campus out there must be relatively vacant.
It is. We shut down, we completely shut down one building, like turned the lights off and everything for cost-saving purposes early on, like I think a few months after. So, you know, we have two buildings still open, but they are very, they're not full at all. It's just as needed bases and certain groups are in the office.
Because that, that's hundreds of people, I, I take it.
Thousands.
Thousands.
Yeah, it has a big impact, obviously, to the surrounding area, the restaurants, the shops and things like that, because that employment center is a big deal there.
Yeah, that's tough. Oh, oh, another thing I might want to add to, Council, mark your calendar for the fifth Tuesday of March. It looks like, normally we take the fifth Tuesday off, but it looks like we may have to schedule something. That was March, wasn't it, Scott, that we were talking about that?
Uh, yeah, I think so. Let me check and see if there's a fifth Tuesday. That sounds right to me.
Yeah, that, that sounds about right. But yeah, if you can, keep your calendars open for that evening. All right. So Colleen, still nobody in the queue, huh?
That's correct, Mayor.
Are they, I wonder, is there technical issues out there, Ashley, that could possibly be happening?
I don't think Ashley's actually on the line right now. Susan was having trouble with her link, so I sent her a new one. But I haven't seen her pop in yet.
It is March 30th, Sherri, that fifth Tuesday.
Okay, so, and that is the fifth Tuesday. Thank you.
There's somebody.
Hey.
We have Frank Atwood.
Oh, good. Well, Frank is ready. Let's bring him in. He's, he's right on time, I'd say. All righty. Oh, Frank, are you there? Frank, you're muted.
I think that unmuted me.
There we go, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Let's see if I can. Let's see if I can be in the picture. I don't know. Am I in the picture?
Very close up, it looks like, and very dark. But we can hear you, so that's a good thing.
Those are the rumors people hear about me.
Well.
Look forward to this interview.
Tonight, that, that might be true. Well, thank you for joining us, Frank. And I'm gonna turn it right over to Councilmember Fay who has questions for you.
Hi, Frank.
Good evening.
Let's see, are, are you a new candidate or are you reapplying?
I'm a new candidate.
New candidate, okay. Do you have any concerns regarding your ability to perform the duties spelled out in the city charter regarding the responsibility for this board?
None whatsoever.
Question number two. By law, the election commission must draw new council district lines if the census shows a significant change. How would you ensure district lines would be drawn fairly?
I, I'd follow the charter guidance of contiguous rectangular forms. Typically, what's happened in previous years, I'm sure you're all familiar, that one of the districts has the proper number of people. So we maintain that district and its boundaries, and then the two other boundary lines get adjusted in order to compensate the other, other three districts. Those, and to try to maintain a geometrically standard rather than any areas of common interest.
Number three. Currently, the city uses traditional voting and campaigns are all mail-in. Share your thoughts on this system and if you would like to change anything.
Yes, I would like to change to approval voting, but the current mail-in system, thanks to knowing the two individuals, Harvey Bransom and Neil McBurnett, who are responsible for risk-limiting audits here in the state of Colorado and who I, as Chair of the Approval Voting Party, authorized to be watchers this last election, I see no reason to change anything. I, I firmly believe in easy access for citizens and property owners to vote.
Final question. The city clerk's office is responsible for running fair elections in Littleton. How would you assist in that process?
When the city clerk has us meet to review IGA's intergovernmental agreements between the three counties that Littleton is part of, I would be part of that review process. Also, if, if as when we had a city election conducted by the city clerk, I'd be verifying that it was fair, honest, transparent and easily acceptable to all people.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, shall we move on to the second choice questions?
Yeah, so I'm gonna, thank you, Frank. So I'll turn it over to Mayor Protam for the licensing.
Hi there, Frank. I'm gonna ask you a couple of questions about your second choice of the licensing authority. Give me just a second. So have you read the powers and duties document for this board? And do you have any concerns regarding your ability to perform these?
No, no concerns, seeing as I discharged my responsibilities for the Arapahoe County Liquor Board. And this would be, have additional duties of as an authority watching over marijuana. So I have no concerns with regards to those duties and responsibilities.
Talk a bit about how you discern information from opposing sources in order to eventually produce a judgment.
As quasi-judicial, I then only listen, try to limit myself to only hearing what is stated in the hearings and also to make clear to fellow council member, commission members what I have heard, if it is all relevant and if it is exclusive to me or to any, any group of people. So I, I listen to both sides, I ask questions and I participate vigorously in watching the discussion.
Give us some insight into how you work with others with whom you may not agree.
I think an example of working with others who I may not agree with is pushing approval voting. I continue to be persistent. I continue to be diplomatic. I continue to be pleasant. And I listen to see if there's an alternative that might be better than approval voting, which I've yet to hear. And, and with regards to approval voting, I'm watching far more polarization taking place and feel that approval voting would minimize the polarization and give candidates in the middle who are currently squeezed out by polarized candidates, an opportunity. So I'm looking forward to if, on both the election commission and the liquor authority to be, be active and open.
The licensing authority requires decisions that may substantially affect the business. Describe the process you will use to make decisions that could have both economic and social impact on the community.
With regards to licensing authority decisions, with regards to businesses, if it's, if there's been shown a need for the business and if, if it complies with the laws of both the city, county and state, then I would find myself granting the granting the license with regards to having this situation before. On the Arapahoe County, there was a liquor, liquor license question that was near the a Jewish school, but it was near their farm area where they were raising goats. And the question was, was that part of the school or was that part of their extracurricular activities? And I, on that issue, I sided with the, the business feeling that it was keeping, it had not encroached onto the school per se, even though it had encroached on school property.
That's all that I have.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Frank, for joining us tonight.
My pleasure.
All right. And if, and if, if you're not appointed to your first or second choice, are you willing to serve, if selected, for another board or commission?
Yes, in the past, not, I was assigned to the Victims Assistance Compensation Board, which you may, I don't know, are you currently filling those positions?
Not this year. Not this year. All right, well, thank you very much, Frank.
Pleasure.
You have a good night. Thank you.
Good night, all. Great.
All righty, all right, Colleen.
Our next candidate, Roy Barti, is in the lobby.
Great, well, thank you. Let's bring him on up. Hi, Roy, this is Jerry, and how are you tonight?
I'm fine, good evening.
All right, well, thank you for joining us. We have 10 minutes to rapid-fire some questions at you. We don't have a lot of time for small talk, unfortunately.
All right.
Thank you for joining us. So I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Elrod for some questions.
Hi, Roy. Thank you for applying to the Arts and Culture Commission. I am the council liaison to that commission, so thank you. So I'll just summarize what the duties of the board are. The Littleton Arts and Culture Commission provides policy advice to council on the issues of art, culture, and tourism. It encourages and supports the growth and expansion of culture and arts in the community, and fosters a vibrant, collaborative, and creative Littleton, where arts and culture are defining features of the community's identity and unique character. So that is their charge. They meet on the second Thursday of each month. Would that create the timing? Is that okay with you?
Right, yes.
All right, so I'll go ahead and start with the questions. So first, can you please describe your experience working in or supporting the arts and culture in a community?
I was, as a performer, in the Littleton Corral for probably 12 to 15 years. And then when there was a split, I went with the Nova Corral, and then when that passed away, was with the Columbine Corral for a while. I was on the Arapahoe Cultural Council for nine years. Part of that time as Chair. And then when my term was limited on that, I was then involved with CATS, Citizens for Arts to Zoo, when, with the recertification of the SAFD in 2015-16. And so I was on the board of CATS and involved with that also. And support support the arts as much as I can.
Excellent, thank you for that. So speaking of supporting the arts, what are some of the arts and cultural events that you do attend in the city of Littleton and why?
Not a lot, unfortunately. The, basically, core groups have done a couple, have gone to a few of the things at Town Hall Arts, but we're not members of Town Hall Arts. And that's, that's about it in the city of Littleton. I have some, it's one of my reasons for wanting to be involved here is the fact that there aren't a lot of venues for small organizations to utilize in Littleton. And that's one of my concerns. One of the things I'd like to see is a venue for smaller organizations, the availability of something like that. Right now, core groups and other groups are limited to trying to find churches that will have them. And that's getting harder and harder for these groups.
Well, you answered the next question, so thank you for being efficient in your response. What are the, so I'll continue then, what are the most important ways that arts and cultures, art and culture should connect within the community?
Availability to everyone, I think, is important, and to appeal to a wider audience, to avoid exclusivity where possible, even though the arts tend to be a niche-type thing where, you know, those of us that are into vocal music go to vocal music, those that are into fine arts go to fine arts. But I'd like to seal an appeal, or at least the ability to everyone to attend or see something, preferably without costing a lot of money.
So do you have any ideas on how to do that, to make them more accessible to everyone and appeal to more people?
Good question. No. In short answer, no. But I'd like to, you know, look at ways to do that and find answers.
Yeah, yeah, same. So I'm going to switch a little bit, going from the, you know, maybe the individual participation to how arts in a community can support a business. So what is your point of view on that? How do you think the arts can support businesses in Littleton?
I'm not sure. I'm, that's something I haven't ever thought about, as far as the arts actually supporting a business. This stumped me, actually, at the moment. I don't, I really don't have a good answer for that, I'm sorry.
That's okay, that's okay. And then the final question, but I think this is somewhat obvious when people apply to this position, is would you be comfortable serving as an ambassador and advocate for the arts and culture in Littleton?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, that is all for questions from Arts and Culture Commission. And I think you also had a, did you have a second choice, Roy? Yes. Oh, Fine Arts Board, that's me as well.
Arts Board, yeah.
Let me get that one. I wasn't ready for that one. One second, please. So while I look for that one, I do want to share with you your experience in the SCFD. It is very valuable. We have few organizations in the city of Littleton that actually qualify for that, so we hope to broaden that in the future. Okay, I am ready. Fine Arts Board. So this one meets on the third Thursday of each month. The Fine Arts Board reviews and selects artwork and exhibitions at public location and serves as stewards of the Littleton Art Portfolio. If you are an artist, you are not allowed to participate in the Fine Arts Board. So this is an artist, either a sculptor or painter, et cetera. Okay. So have you read the powers and duties of the board? I just kind of shared with you what they are, and do you have any concerns with your ability to perform them?
No, and I'm trying to remember when I applied, I glanced at them, but it was, again, there's something involved with the arts that, as a second choice, I would feel comfortable.
So one of the board's duties is to provide arts programs for the city through review and exhibitions in public locations and public facilities. Can you tell us a little bit about existing programs, about the existing programs that currently are in the city, and any ideas for others?
The only two that I'm aware of is the Arts Building there by the used to be where the train station is, and the name.
The Depot Art Galleries?
Art Gallery, and then Hudson Gardens has had public art off and on. And those are the two major things, and that, and of course, the museum. Those are, those are the three areas that I'm aware of at the moment that have.
Do you have any ideas for others that you would like to see, or?
I haven't thought about that again, but certainly the other parks, public spaces, public parks, of course, would be the logical place for arts like that. Certainly sculptures and kinetic art and that sort of thing. Besides the museum for fine art and, you know, pictures, that sort of presentation, I'm not sure what other facilities are actually available. Besides the museum or possibly Bemis would be the other.
Yeah, and we actually do have some artwork in Bemis and other public buildings, our City Hall, our courthouse, and our other public buildings where we're able to display our collections. So when you walk through those other buildings, know that you're looking at public art from the city coffers, I guess. Okay, last question that I'll ask, it's actually a two-part question. The Fine Arts Board is the only board with a budget. The board is responsible for recommending acquisitions of art within the city. What are your thoughts on how to add to the city's art collection?
Just right off the top of my head, soliciting contributions or soliciting artists to present art, of course, for purchase, and I would like to see the schools approached and student art encouraged, and perhaps a program where students could produce and be encouraged to for the city, perhaps city-themed art. If you'll permit me to digress, I didn't talk about culture going to the schools. But that's another area where I think both the fine arts and the cultural arts are very, very much needed, is the fact that programs are being lost throughout the school systems, and that's another area that I'd love to see more involvement with, is the school and encouraging children to get involved.
All right.
All right. I will ask the second part of the question, which is related to disposition of city-owned art, but.
Christina, we've actually run out of time. If we could move on, if that's okay.
All right, thank you, Roy. Thank you for your interest. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Roy, for joining us tonight. And if you're not selected for your first or second choice, are you willing to serve on another board or commission if asked?
If it's something that I have the ability to contribute, sure.
Excellent, excellent. Well, thank you very much for joining us tonight.
All right, thank you. Good evening.
Thank you. Have a good night. Okay. All right, Colleen, we are ready.
Okay, we have Greg Anderson.
All right. Greg is planning commission as well as the Arts Commission. Hi, Greg, I'm Jerry, and how are you doing tonight?
Very well, thanks for having me.
Well, thank you for joining us. So we have about 10 minutes, and it really goes pretty quick with our questions. And unfortunately, we don't have a lot of time for small talk, so I'm going to get right into it with the planning commission questions. All right, cool. So attendance of the planning commission is crucial due to the work required. If selected, will you be able to commit to the second Monday, the fourth Mondays of the month, it's 6:30 meetings?
Yes.
Great, thanks. Have you had a chance to read the power and duty documents of the commission? And if so, do you have any concerns regarding your ability to perform it?
I honestly have not seen those documents, but I believe that I would be able to adhere to all of, you know, the guidelines.
Great. The planning commission spends a great deal of time reviewing codes and zoning. Share an experience that you might have in this area, and if you don't have any experience, just tell us how you would prepare yourself to handle this important task.
Sure, I understand that the learning curve would definitely be steep. I don't have a direct experience with codes, like, in general. I did work in the, or I was in the Army for quite some time, and I am very familiar with regulations and learning all the rules that go along with that. Before the Army, I had also worked in a road crew while I was going to college, dealing with, like, you know, a lot of city officials during that time as well. So while I do understand that the learning curve would be steep, I'm definitely willing to put in the time. I have spent some time in the past few weeks looking over, watching all of the virtual city council meetings, along with some of the archived or city planning meetings, but yeah, so that's what I can.
That's cool. And the council has made it a top priority to complete the core of the comprehensive plan over the next nine months. The planning commission is an integral part of this work. What skills do you bring that will benefit the commission, the staff, and council as we complete this planning? And it has a lot to do with codes and zoning.
Sure. Well, I've definitely worked amongst many teams, so I definitely know how to work with a lot of different types of people. In the Army, I led a team of 25 in a mission that was following communications and movement of foreign adversary. So like, working within a team is something that I kind of rest my laurels on. As it comes to, like, digging deep into actual codes and whatnot, I do have some, I actually kind of enjoy, like, going deep into some of the documentation. What I do now is a software developer, and within that, a lot of our actual code, which is more like programming code, is diving into, like, really, you know, concepts that aren't necessarily going to come up every day, things that aren't necessarily shown, and really figuring out, like, what does this actually mean? So, you know, I have lots of experience with documentation and reading that kind of stuff, and, you know, yeah, working within teams. I think that I'm a pretty good communicator.
Oh, excellent, that's helpful. Cities all over are dealing with the challenges of affordable, attainable housing, construction defect limitations, increased traffic, and other growth issues. City Littleton's no different. As a narrowly built-out community, what role can the planning commission play as it relates to the conversation and the eventual decisions that may need to be made?
Well, I think it's really important to, you know, when we talk about affordable housing and all this kind of stuff, I actually just bought my first house here in Littleton.
Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you very much. It's super exciting. And, you know, to be honest, like, I wasn't necessarily sure that I was going to be able to afford a house in Littleton. You know, the Army doesn't pay a whole lot. And so when we were actually able to find a place and that, like, you know, fit our budget, it was really exciting. And, you know, I'm about to raise my first child here in Littleton, and, you know, I want to provide that same kind of opportunity to him. And, you know, when it comes to, like, affordable housing, I think that, you know, there's, there's a lot of things that go, that come into play here. You know, where is it going to be? How, who are we actually serving here? And, you know, personally, I want to make sure that there's as much as we possibly can, get as much as we possibly can, because that's what builds a community, and that's really what I want to strive to do in a commission like the planning commission, is to build a greater Littleton for my family.
Excellent. I have one more question, and I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Elrod, I believe. The planning commission is a recommending body to the city council. Council does not have to take the recommendation of the planning commission. What will you bring to the relationship to the commission and to the council? to the commission and to the council that will help support the decisions of the planning commission and the vision of the council?
Well, again, like I think, like I said before, I think that I am a good communicator. I, I also believe that like that once a decision's been made, it's also about follow-through and making sure that all of the trickle-down effects from that decision actually get played out. And I think that, you know, personally, I believe that I will be able to handle that follow-through and, and go to those folks that, that a decision that the planning commission makes impacts.
Great. Thank you. I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner, Commissioner Elrod. Councilwoman, a council member Elrod, I'm sorry, I said commissioner. Sorry.
So Greg, thank you for applying. Thank you for your service to our country and for continuing to want to serve your community. I appreciate that. I am the council liaison for the Arts and Culture Commission. So I will be asking you the question there. Do you want me to give you an overview of what the Arts and Culture Commission does or are you relatively comfortable with understanding those duties?
I'm relatively comfortable.
Okay, great. Okay. All right. So first question, please.
And we have about four minutes, I'm sorry.
All right. So I'll hit the good question. Can you describe your experience working in or supporting the arts and culture in a community?
Sure. So I'm going to actually have to throw it back all the way to my high school days. The theater club president back in my high school days and so I did a lot of directing. As well as like performing in like theater and musical and all that kind of stuff. You know, as I've grown, you know, my, my interest now is more in, I have a linguistics background. And so I have spent a lot of time with like languages and that's kind of my new art form. Trying to learn as many as I possibly can. But yeah, in regards to like my direct impact on the community, I would say that like actually putting on plays and theater for my community back, back in high school.
What are some art and cultural events that you would like to see in Littleton that aren't currently offered? I guess that's a little bit of a maybe tough question given COVID and that you're, you've just. Do you have any thoughts of what you'd like to see more perhaps?
Well, I will say that the first time that I actually came to Littleton, my wife is originally from here and so it was really kind of exciting to like come to her place and, you know, just see everything. And the first place that she actually brought me to was the Littleton Historical Museum, right down there in Kettering. And it was really, I, I, I found it to be a really powerful experience because, you know, it's a really great center for not only learning a little bit about Littleton, but they have that, that toys that, that made us recently. And, you know, so not only are you able to get a bit of Littleton, but you're actually able to bring something from the outside here to Littleton. Again, I'm going to be raising my child here in Littleton and, you know, having a resource like that, you know, right across from the library is, is just amazing. I definitely would, would love to see and, excuse me if I haven't, you know, if this is happening, but I moved to Littleton actually right at the beginning of COVID, so I only know so much about what's actually happening here, but I'd love to see some plays in the park kind of stuff. What we're, what we're doing downtown with getting the seating on Main Street down there is excellent. It would be cool if we could have some sort of like concert in between there or something like that. I'm going to run out of time. I have lots of ideas, but like really the foundation in Littleton is really great in regards to a cultural aspect. I would just love to broaden it.
How do you think the arts can support businesses in Littleton?
Sure. I mean, like, how many date nights, what do you do on a date night? You go to like a dinner and a movie, right? Well, why not like make it play? Why not make it like a small little concert? And when you do that, you're actually driving up people going out to these restaurants. You're actually, you know, what shopping at these stores, you're spending money when you go on a date. And so, I mean, like instantly right there, you have that. But not only that, when you have a community that's actually willing to put it on these kinds of events, you want to support your community in other avenues by just like bringing money in in general and like, you know, I think Inglewood is doing this thing where they're like painting horses and whatnot, the Swedish doll horses. And they're giving a thousand dollars to each artist. And that a thousand dollars actually then will then go back into the community. So like you, you're by creating this art, you're, you're actually creating revenue that will go back into your, your local businesses.
Excellent. All right. All right, Greg. Thank you so much. And if you're not selected for the boards that you've applied for, would you be interested in potentially serving on another board?
Sure, I would definitely be willing to have conversations for sure.
All right, great. Well, thank you again.
Thank you guys so much for meeting me and enjoy the rest of your night. I hope it's swift.
Hey Greg, thank you so much for joining us. Thank you for your service and I'm glad you're in the city of Littleton. Thank you very much. All right. Good night. All right.
Mr. Mayor, before we move on to the next candidate, we need to correct a discrepancy. In one document, it says that this candidate has the planning commission as his first.
I'm going to ask the candidate, which one is their first? I, I saw that as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. All right, Colleen, we are ready.
I have no one in the lobby. He was there a second ago and now he's gone, so let's just see if he pops back in.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I noticed that too, Carol, that he has down, our sheet says planning commission first, but I think it's actually reversed. Is that what you saw as well?
Right. Yeah, in one place it, it has one first, then then another place it's, it's the second.
Yeah, I think the applicant has election first. So if, so if that's the case, then be prepared to go first.
Whichever.
Whichever.
His choice, I suppose.
Yeah, and it does look like by his answers, he's got a strong background in the election committee, so.
Yeah, yeah. We have some good candidates and a lot of these people are, there's many of these people are relatively new to our city.
Love it.
Mayor, still no one in the lobby.
Okay, yeah, I'd, I'd see, saw that. Knew he had popped up, but he popped off too, huh? Well, I'll tell you what, why don't we go ahead and just take our break?
Good idea.
We're just a little bit ahead of time. So let's go ahead and take a break and we'll hopefully get back on track. So it is about a minute till, so when you come, let's be back and ready to go by 10 after. Okay? All right, thank you.
Hello. Looks like we got a couple people raring to go now.
We do.
Yay.
And Jerry, just a correction on the 7:40 for Molly Luke. In case your sheet wasn't corrected, and I think that we emailed about this. Her first choice was NGAC, her second is TMB. Even though it doesn't show it there.
The transportation?
Yeah.
Excellent. I'll make sure I got that corrected. Great, and I'm thinking on Nicholas.
What night is that?
Tonight. It's 7:40.
Okay, and she's, it's first choice?
Is NGAC.
Next gen.
And second is transportation.
Okay, sorry, sorry.
And on Nicholas, I think election is first with PC second?
Correct.
Okay.
I forgot to ask our last applicant if they were between the ages of 16 and 36. I think they are. Just in case as a backup.
We now have three stacked up in the lobby.
All right, let's get this thing moving. Let's see, we're still waiting for council members to come back, it looks like.
Correct.
There's Kelly and friend.
I'm just chewing, so I'm here.
Okay, you're good. So it looks like Carol is back, I think we're all back, all right.
Okay, are you ready for Nick?
Let's do it. All right, Nick, are you available? You are muted. Okay, if you could unmute yourself, Nick, that would be great. All right. Still muted. Still muted. We'll get there. And calling it, there you go, all right, Nick, how you doing?
Good, how are you? I'm Nick Newey, so a pleasure to meet you all.
Great, thank you for joining us, I'm Jerry, and we have 10 quick minutes, it goes really quick. So we won't be able to have a lot of small talk, but first I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Fay to questions about the Election Committee.
Hello, Nick.
Hi.
I have four questions for you.
Okay.
First one is, do you have any concerns regarding your ability to perform, to perform the duties in the city charter regarding the responsibility for this board?
No.
Number two, by law, the Election Commission must draw new council district lines if the census shows a significant change. How would you ensure district lines would be drawn fairly?
Well, first of all, I'd ask, how are they drawn now, is it based on populations?
Yes.
Okay, so those are compiled based on number of citizens in those various different districts. And based on that, you would have to figure out an equitable way to get the equal number of representation in each district.
Question number three, currently the city uses traditional voting and campaigns are all mail-in. Share your thoughts on the system and if you would like to change anything.
Um, it seems to work fairly well, although I would like to encourage more in-person voting in a ballot booth. Obviously, that depends on what's happening with COVID and those types of restrictions, but I think it's my mind, a more traditional way of doing things.
Question number four, the city clerk's office is responsible for running fair elections in Littleton. How would you assist in that process?
I'd assume, the way I would assist is making sure that the registered voters are all getting ballots and that they're all counted properly, that they all, each person's vote counts towards each election.
And that's all the questions that I have for the Election Commission.
All right, I have, I'll ask you three questions for the Planning Commission, which is your second choice. And the Planning Commission meets on the second and fourth Monday at 6:30 of every month. So attending the Planning Commission meetings, it's crucial that you attend in order to get the required work done. If selected, will you have any trouble making those dates?
No, I shouldn't.
Great, thank you. The Planning Commission spends a great deal of time reviewing codes and zoning. Share your experience with, that you have in that area, and if you don't have anything in that arena, tell us how you would prepare yourself for these important tasks.
I don't have any experience with zones or, you know, the codes and that type of thing, but obviously with the internet these days, it's easy to research that kind of information and look at what those would be and appropriately understand what's going on.
Great. Let's see, the council, one of our top priorities is to complete the comprehend, the core of the comprehensive plan over the next nine month, nine months, the Planning Commission is integral in this work. What skills do you bring that will benefit the commission, staff, and council as we complete this planning?
Um, I think I'm very good at organizing and putting together a plan to develop and accomplish goals and setting out priorities according to what those goals would be and then following those steps.
Great, thank you. And my last question for you will be, the Planning Commission is a recommending body to the city council. The council does not have to take the commission's recommendation, and occasionally it does not. What will you bring to relationship with the commission and the council in order to support the decisions of the commission and the council?
Can you say that again?
Yeah, so often the Planning Commission, they'll recommend something to the council and usually the council will agree with it, but there are times when we do not agree with it. So with that in mind, that we don't always take the recommendation from the Planning Commission, what will you bring to support anyway, the decisions of council?
Well, obviously implementing what they, you know, would recommend on council and also, you know, if there's any way that we could actually sell that proposal to them, I'd like to be part of that process as well, so.
Great, well, thank you, thank you very much, and thanks for figuring out how to get on the computer and deal with us tonight. If you're not selected to your first or second choice, are you willing to consider one of the other boards and commissions if we ask?
Possibly, yes.
Oh, great, well, well, thank you very much, I really appreciate you hanging in there and eating with us tonight.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much, have a good night.
Take care.
All right.
Are you ready for Allison?
We are.
Here she is.
Hi there, Allison, how are you tonight, can you hear us okay?
Allison, are you there, hang on a sec. Hi Allison, this is Jerry, how you doing tonight? All right, you are muted, so if you could unmute yourself.
There we go.
All right, so we have about 10 minutes and it goes pretty quick, so we don't have, we won't be doing a lot of small talk tonight. But I'm going to turn it over first to the mayor pro tem, Scott Malin, for some questions.
Great.
Thanks, Mayor, hi Allison, I'm gonna jump right in and ask you first, what interests you about transportation?
Yes, hello, thank you for having me. Transportation, I am a motorist, a cyclist, a pedestrian. I feel like every city, big, small town, every place that I've lived in, I've been on every mode of transportation. And a friend, I'm always talking to my friends about, you know, my thoughts and this and that, and what's going on in my neighborhood and around me, and so a friend, the day before applications were due, told me about this opportunity and it felt like amazing timing. And I'm really just looking to get more involved in my community, and I feel very passionate about transportation. I know I'm a Denver native, Colorado native. And as with so many places, I know Denver's grown, Littleton has grown, Colorado has grown. And so I think safe choices are what I'm passionate about.
What do you think are the biggest issues facing Littleton's mobility?
I think accessibility for all of those things that I mentioned, for bicycles, for cars, for pedestrians. I think that in my mind, it's got to be a cohesive thing. And from what I know about Littleton and what I've seen, I think that that is, that's where it's at, making it accessible for every type of transportation.
Of all the modes of transportation, auto, transit, pedestrian, bicycle, et cetera, which gets you most excited and why?
Bicycle. I love riding my bike because it gives me a sense of freedom and I'm, I love, I love being out and about. Any chance I can get to be outside, I'm there, and I think a bicycle is a great way to see a neighborhood, to serve as a means of transportation. I work on a museum and sometimes on my days that I don't have my kids with me, I have been riding my bike down to the train, hopping on the train, if I don't have time to ride all the way to downtown Denver, so definitely bicycle.
Tell us how you think Littleton funds street maintenance and transportation?
That's a great question, I think that most likely through taxes, and I'm, I'm reading up and I'm learning as I go, I feel like I'm a very quick learner. The older I get, I feel like the more I know.
Transportation is a regional issue, what are the most important regional transportation issues facing Littleton and the region?
Mm-hmm. Regional. Well, in a small bit of research that I've done, it seems like with growth comes problems, and I'm not saying problems, bad or good, I'm just saying challenges. And I've been doing a little bit of research on different intersections, different parts of Littleton, and it seems like that is possibly where some challenges lay.
How do you define mobility?
Mobility, going from one place to the next, being mobile, whether it is bicycle, the ability to walk, a car, bus, a wheelchair, one place to the next.
If you had to list in order how the city should spend its transportation dollars, what would be your top three?
Oh, that's a, that's a big question. Transportation dollars, so top three. I think accessibility for everybody is, in my mind, a priority. And big picture, accessibility as far as public transportation, accessibility as far as sidewalks and curbs that are accessible to wheelchair users. So one, I think, as I'm, as I'm talking, I'm a thinker and a talker, I'm going to say number one is safety. Number two is mobility. I think number three in my mind goes along with mobility as far as interconnectedness, and I think Littleton's an amazing place because there is such a network of trails and walkways and sidewalks and streets, and it's just, I think Littleton has a ton to offer as far as different modes of transportation.
And then the last question for me is, give us your top two ways to educate and engage the community about transportation issues.
So top two ways to engage the community. Well, I have noticed that with things going on around Littleton, and when I'm out and about, it catches my eye whether I'm at the Littleton Museum, downtown Littleton, and I see somebody there with information as far as whether they're handing out information, I think it's having a presence in the community is very important to educate the public. So top two. Let's see. Yeah, I think having a presence, and I think being accessible, which I have found, anytime I've interacted with an official from Littleton, I feel like everybody's been very accessible. And by that, I mean, I pulled up the website this morning and everybody's names, emails. I've had very good response.
Allison, thank you so much, I'm gonna pass it off to Councilmember Eldrod, who's got some questions for you about your second choice, the Fine Arts Board.
Okay, great, thank you.
And we have about four, four minutes left.
I'll try to talk fast, I'll try to answer quickly.
Thank you.
So thank you for applying to the Fine Arts Board, I am the, council liaison to the Fine Arts Board, it's a fantastic and fun board. Okay, so, one of the board's duties is to provide arts program for the city through review and exhibitions in public locations and public facilities throughout Littleton. Tell us a little bit about the existing programs, as you are aware of them, and any ideas for others.
Well, I've been into the Stanton Gallery, the Town Hall Art Center. I've seen a ton of public art around the city on buildings and public spaces, the museum, the library, programming, I've attended at the library, in the parks. And what was the second part of that question?
So what, what ideas do you have for others?
Ideas for others, I think you all are doing a great job. I think maybe expanding on some of these ideas, but honestly, I, I've lived a lot of places and I feel like it's, I've been to some events myself, I've been with my husband, I've been with my children, and I think that we've all enjoyed things that we've participated in. And I can give you specifics, but I'd have to think about that because I, I'm a processor as well.
You got it, you got it, you can come back to it if you'd like. Another one of the board's duties is to promote the arts within the city to enhance the quality of life. What skills do you bring to this particular duty and how will you work with the board to execute on that?
Well, I believe that I'm very personable, so I don't have a problem interacting with others and promoting something that I believe in. I currently work as an educator at the Clifford Still Museum, and I wholeheartedly believe in the importance of the arts. So I feel like that's something that I also live and breathe and, you know, I also, I, in general, I like to gather all of the information and then run with it, just to know that I'm comfortable with things. But I think that you all have a great thing going, so I wouldn't have any problems promoting it.
Okay, excellent, and the final question, this is one of the few boards, the only board actually, that has a budget. That budget is used for the acquisition of art in the city. What are your thoughts on how to add to the city's art collection?
Oh. I think something interactive would be really fun. Yeah, I'll leave it at that, I think something interactive, I know there's a lot of, just thinking about parks, I think there might be room to merge something with the parks and some art pieces, and I know I've seen some artwork at the parks, but maybe something more interactive.
I know part of this question, it's actually a two-part question. It is the disposition of art in the city, that's one of the duties of this board as well. So do you have any recommendations for the disposition of city-owned art?
Could you clarify that for me?
Yeah, so, so the role of the board is one to acquire public art, but we also have a really big collection. And over time, we may have to choose to dispose of some of those artworks for a variety of reasons. Some of it could be the condition that it's in, or, you know, that's usually the reason. So do you have thoughts on, you know, how you would go about making that decision on the disposition of city-owned art?
Okay, thank you. Well, I think art, especially if art is outside, over time, it can weather, and even if the artist's intention is the best, things happen and things change. I believe it would be very difficult if I were the artist to know that my piece were going away. I think involving the artist in that decision and conversation is probably a top priority. And if they know of somebody that would be interested in their piece, I don't like to throw things away as well.
All right, well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Allison, thank you. And if you were not to get your first or second choice, would you be willing to consider another placement on another board or commission?
Well, I feel very passionate about these two areas. So I think I will stay with these.
Okay, thank you, and thank you for spending some time with those tonight.
Definitely, I appreciate your time as well.
You have a good night.
Thanks, you too.
Thank you. All right.
Are we ready for Laura?
We are ready for Laura.
Okay. Here she is.
Great, thank you. Hi, hi Laura, this is Jerry, and if you could unmute yourself.
There you go.
All right, we hear you, hi, that, thank you for joining us tonight, Laura, and we have about 10 minutes with you, it'll go pretty quick. We just have you down for one board tonight, so I'm gonna turn it right over to Councilmember Grove.
Hi Laura, how are you?
I'm good, hi Pam, how are you?
Fine, thank you for your service and serving as vice chair.
Oh, you're welcome.
I have a couple questions for you, why have you decided to reapply to the Historical Preservation Board?
Well, quite frankly, um, the thought of losing the three years of information I've gained is, sounded like I should probably, you know, put it to use for another three years, because it takes about that long to learn all this stuff. No, really, I'm really interested in, in helping finish up the redistricting of the Main Street Historical District. And I'm interested in seeing the mid-century mile get started. So I figured another three years might get all that stuff done, or at least get it, get it going. Plus, I really enjoyed learning a lot about the, all the stuff that's going on in Colorado on historic preservation and that kind of stuff. So it's been interesting and I, I'd like to help again if I could.
What have you learned during your time on the board, I know it's a steep learning curve and you said you've learned a lot, so like, kind of what, what were some of the things that come to mind?
I learned there's a lot more red tape in historic preservation than I ever imagined. You know, it really is incredible how long it takes to get a COA or get a district, it's just, it's incredible to me. And I've learned that some of the things that I think are historic are not historic in, in other people's minds on the boards or according to the Colorado State Preservation stuff. State Preservation stuff. So, what else have I learned? I've learned a lot about mid-century stuff, which I'd never learned before. Never would have thought those buildings on Littleton Boulevard were worth anything worth saving. And now, I know all about the architects that have built those buildings. And I learned a lot about the history of Littleton that I didn't know. So, I learned a lot.
Sounds great. What would you say is your greatest accomplishment while you've been on the board?
You know, this is a really silly little thing, but it's been kind of important. I've been able to correspond with the museum and get a lot of stuff out of the museum that we've had problems in the past getting information or pictures out of them. And it felt like a great accomplishment for me to be able to get ahold of Jennifer and work with her in October, November, December last year to get pictures for the new Littleton Legacy map that we were working on that Lisa put together. I know that sounds really silly, but that seemed to be a real big hang-up the last few years, being able to get stuff, be a liaison with the museum. So, I thought that was a good accomplishment on my part. And right now, I'm working on the surveys that we just did of Main Street and that historic area. And I'm working on designating whether things are contributing or non-contributing. And then, I'll be working on the application for redistricting. So, those are kind of the accomplishments I've had.
Okay. Describe how you will continue to contribute to the board.
Well, I'm kind of the devil's advocate on the board sometimes. I'm not an architect, and I'm not entrenched in my views on some of the historic buildings downtown. And I think going forward, that will be sort of my contribution to be the odd man out, thinking about the other side of the picture. Like, one of the things I'm worried about is if we change the historic district and it's no longer opt-in, I'm worried about those people who own buildings who aren't opting, and how we're gonna go forward in the future and deal with them, and have their property rights respected. That's one of the things I'm kind of worried about.
Okay. What have you enjoyed most about being on the board?
Gosh, it's been kind of fun learning the historic stuff downtown, and knowing now when I walk down the street that, oh, that's the Mayfield Building, and this is so-and-so's house, and this used to be, you know, a barber shop. And I've really kind of enjoyed getting to know people that live in the city I live in, that I never have seen in the grocery store, that I never met a church, I never saw a school, but they're my neighbors. And now I know more people across the city. It's been really fun getting to know people.
What, if anything, would you change about the board?
I would instill time limits on our meetings for talking for certain people, well, for everyone. One of the things I would really change is that when you come on the board, I think there should be a different sort of training going on for a new board member. I think every board member should be handed a packet of the preservation ordinances and the design standards, and the design guidelines, and all that stuff. And given all that kind of right up front, because when I came on the board, there really wasn't that. And I know that, I think people just assumed you knew all that stuff, but there's so much stuff out there. There are so many things like the COA, what does that stand for? The ULUC, what does that stand for? All those things, I think there should be sort of a packet that we hand out to new board members that explains all that stuff that kind of gets you up to speed a little faster than I seem to get up to speed. There's just so much information out there. And like last week, working on this stuff for deciding non-contributing and contributing, I mean, I had to call and get piles and different descriptions and booklets. And sometimes it's easier for some people, maybe just me, but I think other people too, to have the paper product, to have the design standards, the book in your hand, as opposed to looking on the computer and trying to find the information you need. It's nice to have on the computer, but when you're working on the committee, it's really nice to have that stuff in your possession. So, that's kind of what I'd change.
I think that's a great idea, because it is such a steep learning curve. And if you're not an architect, or if you're not familiar with the code, it can be very difficult. You had not put any other board as a choice, so it's HPB. If you would be considered for another board, would you be interested?
Sure.
Okay. Do you have anything in mind?
You know, my second choice has always been the museum board.
Okay, which is kind of going away.
Yeah.
In the last minute or two we have left, do you have any questions of us?
You know, I am kind of curious as to why, when we're doing the redistricting for the Main Street Historical District, why the city council didn't ask to go further north on Prince and further north on some of the other side streets? That was a question I asked last Tuesday, or last Wednesday at a meeting, because I know you all directed the HPB to look at the redistricting. And I just kind of wondered why we were only going south of Main Street and not further north.
Further north from the football area you're talking about?
Further north from Main Street. Up Prince, up Curtis, up Nevada.
Yeah.
And I don't know the answer.
Yeah, when we talked about it, Alamo was kind of the biggest risk.
Right.
So, that's why we wanted to make sure we secured that first. So, it wasn't that we really didn't talk about north, to be quite honest with you, north of Main Street, but Alamo was really that big focus for us.
Okay, okay.
Thank you very much, Laura, for applying again, and for all the work you've done for the city so far.
You're very welcome. I've enjoyed it. Thank you for having me.
This is Jerry. Again, thank you for reapplying, because as you know, the HPB is an important board to us more now than ever. So, thank you so much for spending some time with us tonight.
You're very welcome. Have a good evening.
Thank you. All right. We are ready for the next one.
Okay, I had Susie Lanners. Oh, she's back.
Okay.
She disappeared for a minute.
Yeah, good. Let's see if we can get her on there. All right, Susie, you are muted, so if you could unmute yourself, that'd be great. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Hi.
All right, so, we have 10 minutes, and it'll go pretty quick. And you have a couple boards that you've indicated you'd like to be on. So, our small talk will be very minimal. So, right now, I'm gonna turn it over to Councilmember Grove.
Hello, I'm the council liaison for the Next Gen Board. Oh, we've got two applicants here. I see two. We're talking to Susie right now, so.
No, you only have.
Yeah, go ahead and ask your questions.
Susie, can you elaborate why you decided to apply to be on the Littleton Next Gen Board?
Yeah, definitely. So, you may have seen in my application, I'm actually new to Littleton. I just purchased a home here in December. I rented in the town for a little while, but I'm brand-new to Colorado. Really just want to get involved with the community, and I saw this as an opportunity to just dive in.
Excellent. Congratulations on your home.
Yeah, and this particular board seemed like one that would be a good starting place for me to kind of get to know the rest of you, and the different committees, and what's all going on here.
And what aspect about serving the city is most important to you?
You know, since I'm a homeowner here, it's important to me that the city is healthy, economically and community-wise. I want there to be good schools. I want to enjoy living here. I want the roads to be nice. And I think it's important for me to be a part of that. I don't just want to kind of sit on the sidelines and wait for someone else to do the work. I definitely want to do what I can to keep Littleton what it is.
From the time you've lived here, what do you think are the big issues facing Littleton over the next three to five years?
So, again, I haven't lived here very long, but since I did just purchase a home here, the one thing that has stuck out to me is housing. It seems like the housing prices, both for homeownership and for renting, are increasing faster than incomes. And that's concerning to me for a host of reasons. I mean, if people are spending more than they can afford on housing, that just reduces the economic flow in the community everywhere else. It increases chances of homelessness. It puts a strain on families that can have a ripple effect to generations. So, I think that's something definitely to be addressed.
How would you best contribute to the committee in terms of skills, background, or interest that you bring to the group?
Yeah, so, in my day job, I do marketing and public relations. I work for a construction company, so I'm very comfortable in a community liaison role. This is kind of the role that I've served throughout my career. And actually, I love doing it. I love kind of being the person that can connect the dots between what's going on behind the scenes, and the people who are affected by what's happening. So, I'm hoping I can kind of put my talents there to use on the board.
The group members often have difference opinions on what they want to discuss, and how to best provide feedback to the city council. How would you interact or work with people when it comes to individuals with very strong and differing opinions?
Yeah, this is a fun one. So, I think everyone's voice should be heard, first of all. And I think strong opinions on any side of an argument just indicate passion, and I think that's great, that people have passion. However, sometimes it can get, it can put blinders on people, for sure. So, first of all, I was giving people their chance to speak. I mean, everyone needs to be able to hold the floor for a certain amount of time. But really, I'm just a fan of defaulting to an agenda and setting timelines on meeting agendas. I think I've found that that's the best way to move things along, because it's not saying, hey, we don't care, you can't talk. It's saying, we've allotted three minutes for this discussion, and we're at five, so let's table it, and we'll come back to it, something like that. And I know that can kind of sound like, you know, it's dismissive, but I think it can help just move things along, because sometimes you just have to.
That makes sense. The members are expected to attend a meeting the first Monday of the month at 6:30, and at a, excuse me, first Thursday of the month, at a minimum. And then, there might be some other subcommittee meetings that you can opt into, or maybe some activities when COVID is over. Is that any problem for you?
Nope.
Okay. And I want to confirm you're between 16 and 36 as of April 1?
Yes.
Okay, good. Would you prefer to be considered for a one-year term starting April 1, or two-year term?
Two.
Two-year, okay. You had a second choice, so I am gonna turn it over to Councilmember Eldrod, and she'll ask you some questions about the other committee you're interested in. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we have about four minutes.
Of course we do. It's been a constant four-minute, Susie, so that's our joke. Okay, so I will ask you questions on the Arts and Culture Commission. Thank you for applying for that as well. I am the liaison, the council liaison to that commission. And I will just jump right in. So, could you describe your experience working in or supporting the arts and culture in a community?
To be really frank with you, I don't have any. I do consider myself to be an artist, and it's important to me. But my experience bringing that outside of my home is extremely limited. I would love to learn, and that's why I chose you as my second choice. You know, aside from just being passionate vocally, I can't say that I have any specific experience, but I just want to be honest about that.
What kind of artist are you?
I'm a writer and a painter.
Oh, okay. All right, so, welcome to Littleton, and as a new homeowner as well. So, what are some of the arts and cultural events in Littleton that you have attended, and why?
Yeah, so unfortunately, I haven't attended much, because COVID has been here the entire time that I've been here. I do live near the Hudson Gardens, so I frequent that, and the trails throughout the city. But that's, you know, I've done some of like the virtual tours at the Denver Art Museum, and I did get a chance to go there. I know that's not Littleton, but everything's been closed.
I know. So, we are doing virtual programming of our art exhibits at the Littleton Museum, so check that out as well. They actually have them up at that. So, but it seems like you have some awareness of what is available here. Can you think of some other things that you hope to see either when COVID opens up, or that you, you know, you're interested in, and potentially going elsewhere to do?
Yeah, yeah, definitely. So, I think that there's opportunity for sort of like guest spots at the museum, and even at the Hudson Gardens or something. So, bringing other local artists in, that may not be specifically from Littleton, but may have some recognition in the area to kind of do features here would be great. I would also love to see some educational events. I know that there is, especially at the Hudson Gardens, they do a really good job of that there. But I think people are definitely craving that in-person aspect of it. So, I'd love to see some of that, especially for kids, would be awesome. Community art classes for kids.
So, Sparks has some community art classes, and the Littleton Fine Arts Museum also has different exhibitions throughout the year. So, again, once we become more open, hopefully you can experience those. Let's see, how about, let's talk about the impact to the community. So, what are some important ways that the arts and culture should connect with the community?
So, I think a lot of times, people sort of see arts and culture as a separate thing. And in my perfect vision, it's very integrated. So, it's a part of the city planning even. I would like to see, and there is, I think Littleton does actually a good job of this, but just integrating the arts and culture community into the everyday life of Littleton. So, considering city design and the park spaces is a great way to bring that together. Events like the art and the music in the park thing are really great. Just keeping it open and available, and really well-communicated, I think, is key, because I know that there's a lot that happens. This was super true in the town I previously lived in. There was tons going on, but no one ever heard about it. So, just keeping it out there is important.
Yep, agreed. Final question, how do you think the arts can support businesses?
I think it can drive people here to Littleton. I think that if it becomes a point of interest for people to come here, I mean, it's like, if you have just one restaurant, it's not a food scene, right? But if you have many, it is, and it brings people into town. And I think the same can be true for the arts. And I think the more attractions you bring to a place, the more people it's gonna drive, that in turn drives business and residency even.
Okay, that is all I have for questions. Thank you so much, Susie.
All right, Susie, thank you for joining us tonight. And if, should you not get your first or second choice, would you be willing to serve on another board or commission if we were to ask you?
Absolutely.
Cool, all right. Well, thank you very much, and I appreciate you spending some time with us.
Okay, thanks, everyone.
You have a good night.
You too.
Thank you. All right.
Are you ready for Molly?
We are ready for Molly.
Okay, Molly Luke.
Okay, all right. Hello, Molly, this is Jerry, and if you could unmute yourself?
Hey.
Hey, all right, Molly, how you doing tonight?
Good, how are you doing?
Great, thank you. We have down for the Next Gen, and also the Transportation Mobility Board. Both very important boards to us right now. They're both very new. So, we have about 10 minutes, and it'll go pretty quick, so we won't be doing a lot of small talk, so don't take that as personal. So, I'm gonna turn it right over to Councilmember Grove.
Hi, Molly. First thing, I want to confirm that you're between the ages of 16 and 36 as of April 1st, which is a qualification of the Next Gen Committee.
Yeah, I am turning 36 on March 25th, so I would be 36 this next year.
Okay.
My last year.
Can you elaborate on why you decided to apply to this committee?
This is a hard one. There's a lot of reasons. You know, my husband and I moved here probably five years ago. Um, you know, I, we, my husband and I moved here probably five years ago. And as really young professionals, we had been living, um, in a city. And there's a lot of things that really drew us to, um, Littleton. And, um, and now since then, we've become parents, the two little twins. And so we've also kind of have that, that side of the life of, uh, just being new parents. And there's a lot of great things, but there's a lot of things that, um, you know, I still don't, I think for me, at like a younger age, I really want like a sense of community and feeling really connected around topics that are, you know, exciting to me. And there's a lot of really great things in the Littleton community that, um, I enjoy, but we haven't really found some ways to connect, um, as much as I would think and as much as, as I would hope. And so, um, so I, I think that I love the idea of this committee. And, um, I think that's a really cool idea because I, I think for me, I've experienced a little bit. Like I know there's the people out there and just having more of a sense of how to get, um, a lot of the draws that, you know, you get like in Stapleton or like some of these other places where we have a lot, um, there's more people that are maybe younger draw, I guess. Um, and, but I know it's all here in Littleton. There's been a lot of really great things. And so, um, so I think this idea of like, just even further creating that sense of community is, is valuable.
You mentioned some topics of interest. This group, um, talks about a lot of different topics, some which we ask them to as councils, some which would they come up with and then make a recommendation. What kind of topics do you think would be something that you would want to make sure this group talked about?
Um, so you know, something that I feel strongly about, and so I don't know, you know, I think, we'll see if this is something that's interesting, but is, you know, I think there's a lot of sustainability initiatives and just really community, ways of fostering community and creating community sense. But, um, you know, there was that, like the Littleton, um, like there was, um, like a social justice walk that happened in downtown Littleton, and it was really cool to see that that was really facilitated. And, um, you know, I was able to bring my, my twins on that, and that's something that is a, you know, a topic that's important to me. And so I think those kinds of ways to engage the community, um, to better the community and help make people feel like more engaged and they find, they can have ways to do that would be something.
What do you think are some of the big issues that are going to be facing Littleton over the next three to five years?
COVID really makes that, um, a little bit more difficult. Um, you know, I know for me personally, um, there's a lot of like, there's some things that make it so that it's harder for me to know if I want to stay, like air quality issues, um, transportation issues, housing prices. Um, the, I, I think those for me personally are the things that, um, make it harder, schools. Um, and there's probably, it's hard to say whether those affect Littleton or just like the world. But, um, you know, I think Littleton also, it, it's an interesting spot that there definitely seems like a shift a little bit in demographics, and I'm totally saying this anecdotally. But, um, that, you know, we have a lot of people moving out of Denver, um, more to houses, the house. And so, um, I don't know, I think there's just, there is definitely like a, a shift happening in terms of what are the things that people are watching in a, in a community and in a city. And, um, and so I think like downtown Littleton with COVID, I think it's going to be a really interesting to see how that goes. Um, how well businesses can survive and kind of keep that community feel and keep making people feel like that community sense that Littleton brings, so.
Uh, this board meets on the first Thursday of the month from 6:30 to 8:30. And then sometimes there's committee meetings which you can opt in. Uh, would that work for you?
Yeah.
Okay, and it's important to, um, attend the meetings for continuity. And there's something in the charter that says you can't miss more than three meetings a year. Um, and would you, uh, could like to be considered for a one-year term or two-year term? And even though you would be, um, a little bit over the, um, age, as long as you start your term before, uh, you turn 37, then it's fine.
Uh, I would be happy to do a two-year term if I can still get in under the cusp, I guess.
Um, okay, I'm going to turn it over to Jerry, who's going to ask you some questions about your second choice.
Okay.
Thank you.
Actually, I'm gonna, we're gonna turn it over to the Mayor Pro Tem, Scott Malone.
Oh, I'm sorry, Scott.
No worries. Hi, Molly.
Hey, how's it going?
Let me hit the highlights here because we have limited time. Um, transportation is a regional issue. What are the most important regional transportation issues facing Littleton and the region?
Oh, what are they? Um, I love this because I get to just say the things that I think and knows if they're accurate or not. But I mean, there's definitely a lot of, um, commuting, a lot of cars. Um, you know, I think that the light rail system is fantastic. But, you know, I don't know how COVID kind of, I know that I was already having a hard time a little bit beforehand, and now COVID probably made that a little bit more different as well. Um, you know, I think, so I would say all of that. Something else that I think about a lot is, um, just the evolution. I think there's a lot more like electric cars that are, um, coming into play. And that's, I personally have a, an electric car, but really that's, it's such an infrastructure issue that, um, having an ability for people to have electric cars. I only have one because my work happens to, um, put one in place. But, um, I can see that those kinds of things having more infrastructure and the difficulties that come with those. But there's still a definitely a draw in the, um, in the state of Colorado to make things more electric. Um, yeah, I would say that would be my.
Sure, if you had to list in order how the city should spend its transportation dollars, what would be your top three?
Hmm. Um, I mean, one thing that I really, I do like that you guys have this envision Littleton in this transportation plan. And I, I really think that aligning with that, because that was a very, um, thoughtful approach to, um, doing that. And I really appreciated a lot more pedestrian bike-friendly, um, approaches and really putting that infrastructure in place for kind of incentivizing people to use different modalities of getting around than just cars. So, um, I would say that probably one of them would be like, would be cars and, you know, like, less, less attention on cars would be one of the preferences. Um, knowing that that's not necessarily the always possible. Um, I think that, you know, infrastructure for alternative, like electric vehicles, um, and like light rail and some commuter, those types of things. But there.
Sure, Mayor, are we out of time?
Yeah, you have about one more minute.
All right, let's do a quick one here, Molly. Um, give us your top two ways to educate and engage the community about transportation issues.
Hmm, took it in. Oh, one minute, okay. Um, so, I don't, I honestly don't know. I mean, I, I, um, I, I, I think that is a limitation because I, I don't know enough about like a city, you know, owning a city or running these kinds of plans. Um, it's no good answer to that, unfortunately. I think I'd have to research it a little bit or know, ask, ask some experts, but.
No, that's all right, Molly. Thank you so much, uh, for joining us. Um, Jerry?
Hey, well, thank you very much, Molly, for joining us tonight. And if you do not get your first or second choice, would you be willing to consider another Board or Commissioner that, that we are asked?
Yeah, I'm, you know, I'm really happy to, I want to be involved in Littleton. I love Littleton. So, um, I'm happy to do whatever is, whatever is helpful.
Awesome. Thank you very much for spending some time with us.
Thank you, guys.
All right, have a good night.
You too. Hey.
All right, thank you. We're doing pretty good here on time. All right, we are ready for Doug.
Okay.
Hi, Doug, this is Jerry, and if you could unmute yourself. Okay, we're still looking, yeah, you're still muted. I'm not sure which button that you have to unmute. I know in my case, it's something at the top. Colleen, you know where, you know where his button would be?
It depends on his device. Doug, try hitting your spacebar. Do you have a microphone icon at the top of your page or the bottom right of your page?
We'll get there, we'll get there. Ah, we'll find it. And Councilmember Fay, this will, you're, you're up in the queue here. So, all right, we'll, we'll figure it out here, Doug. We'll, um.
Yeah, Doug and I tested this the other day and it worked fine.
Oh, great, all right. He must have a microphone there somewhere on his.
Yeah, you've got to have a little mic icon.
Try clicking on the top, see if anything happens. No, let's try clicking on the bottom.
I love how expressive you are, Doug. We can understand you.
Seriously. We should ask people when they unmute themselves how they unmute themselves. That would be useful information, I think. Keep, no, we don't hear you yet. Just keep doing whatever. We'll find something. I don't think we have anybody up any, anybody in the queue, so I think.
You do not.
Yeah, so we just, just keep, we'll just keep figuring this one out. Isn't there, Colleen, something like a control, Kelly, I know that sometimes you have to hit control something. What do you hit? Like now.
Who, me? No, I just, I see the little, I, I see the little microphone icon on the bottom of my screen.
Yeah.
You don't see that, Doug?
Is there al-, isn't there also a control something?
Uh, Ctrl Shift M.
That's one.
Ctrl Shift and M, as in Mary.
Uh, Colleen, can I just call in like the, a phone number or something?
No, not in Teams.
Tab, do you know how to hop this gentleman? Do, you know Teams? Do you know how to help him get off of mute? Dude.
Yeah, I don't understand why the mic is showing muted.
I know.
Um. And he probably has two controls somewhere on his computer.
And Colleen, you don't have, obviously you don't have control over.
I do not.
Yeah. Okay.
Um, Doug, do you want to try disconnecting and reconnecting to see if that helps?
I bet that's the case. That'll.
Let's give it a shot.
Yeah. So until then, uh, maybe we could take a break. We're, we're down to, including Doug, we have four left. Uh, but.
Mm-hmm.
Let's.
And break is, break is next on our agenda, so that could work.
He's coming back. I, I think he's just logged in. Let's see what happens. I see Colleen is on break. Why don't we go ahead and take, uh, we are, we are up for a break anyway. Let's go ahead and take a, a 10-minute break. We'll come back at, uh, 8:15. Come back at 8:15. Okay, Colleen, we're taking break till 8:15.
Thank you, Jerry. Hey Jerry.
Hello. All right, we get old Doug figured out, we think?
Yeah, he decided to come in through a different browser, so we'll see if that works.
Excellent, excellent, I hope it does. All right, we got a couple minutes here, Scott's back. All right, if we have Kelly and Pam back, then we're ready to roll. There's Pam. Alls we need now is Kelly. Hey, Kelly's back.
Okay.
Yeah, let's go ahead and bring him back up, see, make sure we're working.
Here we go.
Great, thank you. Alrighty Doug, let's try unmuting yourself this time.
Okay, is that better?
All right, you sound just like you look.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for hanging in there through these technical things, they can be maddening, no doubt. Anyway, so we have about 10 minutes and it goes pretty quick and so there won't be a lot of small talk, so don't take that personal. So I'm just going to turn it right over to Councilmember Fay.
Hi Doug, I'm Carol.
Hello.
I have four questions for you.
Okay.
The first one is, do you have any concerns regarding your ability to perform the duties in the powers and duties document for this board?
No, I do not.
Very good. Number two, do you have construction background and if no, what do you have that would be of value to this board?
Do not have a formal construction background, other than helping friends out with, with small projects or medium sized projects, but relevant to the board, I have a house and have been through a board approval process and sat through several other approvals where we were concerned with what was going to happen. And so I've seen it from both the inside, where my own house was, was the subject, and seen it with others that we expressed a great deal of interest in. And, and so I think that's where I would bring some experience to, to the board and I'll say an insider's perspective of some things that could possibly be improved and things that are going well. So I think that would be the, the value and the benefit I would bring to the board.
Okay. Number three, are you familiar with the Littleton building codes and if not, what would you do to become familiar?
I am certainly familiar with the ones that applied to my house and to others that I've seen or like I said, bring before. But before going on to the board, I would absolutely sit down, I have poked around the website and done a lot of reading over the past couple of weeks. Did not sit down and read the whole building code, I'll come right out and admit that.
Yeah.
It's a little dry, but I have actually looked through parts of it just to see what it said, but certainly would get more familiar and, and just kind of the in general things, obviously not the details, but okay, what kind of building heights are allowed, what kind of border perimeters, kind of the things that would come up more frequently, at least from the meetings I've been to, and I think those would be more pertinent right off the bat.
Okay. Per our city attorney, when the board is making decisions, we use the term quasi judicial. It means that the board is acting like a judge. We all want judges to be impartial, we don't. As we all want judges to be impartial, we do not allow board members to talk to others about the application prior to its hearing. What are your thoughts regarding quasi judicial decision making? And how do you see yourself working within a board governed by these rules?
I'll say I don't see that as a problem. The, the not talking and discussing before would not be a concern, I don't see a problem there. I've been in several situations on prior homeowners association boards where people or issues coming before the board were too close to me, or I knew the people, or I knew what they were doing and had no problem excusing myself from that to make sure that there was no partiality being shown, or I didn't let anyone know or disclose that that was a situation, so I stepped out of that situation to avoid that appearance of impropriety. So I, I think seeing that and being aware of those kind of things would, would not, or would allow me to serve a board well in that regard. And obviously reading and, and being prepared. Example, Colleen and I spent time before this meeting making sure. So, you know, when we come before the board, I wouldn't be coming there saying, oh, I haven't read anything, I haven't looked at it, what are we talking about today? I, I would pride myself on being prepared like I thought I was today.
Finally, this board makes decisions about grants and waivers to the building codes based on specific criteria. What's your decision making process?
First of all would be, and most importantly, I think, is listening, seeing what's being presented and awareness of the rules that are being, or I'll say that the codes being talked about. If it's a property line easement that someone's trying to build closer to that, I'd be sure that I understood what that was and how that applied. So that I could then fairly make a call as to what, what's the right way to go with that. I would not, I don't like being unprepared and not knowing what's coming before me, so looking at that and understanding that and truly listening, understanding what staff is presenting as far as their concerns with the issues. I've seen that both with the Board of Adjustment and the historic approval boards. Paying attention to the work the staff has done so that you're aware, since they're the closest to this and they're working with those residents, understanding what really is, is taking place and, and whether that adjustment or deviation should or should not be allowed to go forward.
That's all the questions I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, well, thank you very much Carol. Doug, thank you very much for spending some time with us and should you not be appointed to this particular board, would you be willing to consider another board or commission if we thought you were a good match for that?
I'd probably like to hear what it is, I kind of, I tried to pick a board that hit, hit home, hit close to home and was really relevant to the kind of things that I'd like to see and like to work with. So that's kind of why I left it at one selection, because that was, was really near and dear to the heart, but I'd possibly be interested in something else, but certainly would prefer to, to have some input on it. Cold, cold and on, on the carpet with it.
All right, well, again, thank you for your, your coming to us tonight and also thank you for figuring out how that thing worked. Was, what was it that, that fixed it was just logging off and logging back in, is that what did it?
Actually, what I did is I went through a different route, that actually pulls up Microsoft Teams, which I have on the machine, and I actually went back through a browser, kind of the old fashioned way, and just copied the link in instead of clicking on the link so that I could direct where it went. I toggled that microphone so many times, you all can't believe it, but.
It wouldn't work, yeah.
So yeah, I just tried a different route and fortunately that worked. Unfortunately, it's not the route Colleen and I tried though. That's why it was a little surprising, it didn't work.
Yeah, well, and you weren't, we've had a couple others that have had similar issues, so again, thank you very much for joining us.
Thank you all, appreciate the time, have a good evening.
All right, good night.
Good night.
All right, that was good. So, Colleen, we are ready.
For Elliot.
We're down to three more, Council.
Okay, here's Elliot.
All right. This will be transportation and he, he doesn't have a second choice. All right, hi Elliot, this is Jerry, if you could go ahead and unmute yourself. And still, there we go.
Hey, all right. I was already unmuted.
There you go.
How's it going?
Thanks for joining us tonight, we appreciate it. We have about 10 minutes and it'll go pretty quick, so I'm just going to turn it right over to the Mayor pro tem, Scott Millen.
Thanks Mayor, hi Elliot. Let me jump right in. What interests you about transportation?
Well, I've been a, somebody who has used transportation for a long time. I commuted by bike for many years in Seattle, so I think I have a, a bit of a unique perspective. I'm sure others commute by bike as well, but you know, just very interested in, you know, in, in bike and pedestrian friendly modes of transportation throughout the city. And kind of on that note, I actually was involved in an accident on my bike, I was hit by a car who was, the, the driver was inattentive and ran a red light and, and hit me with my daughter in the carriage behind me. Yeah, very scary situation, happened at the corner of Bowles and Federal there a couple of years ago. Prior to the rework, excuse me, but yeah, so close to my heart in that regard, but yeah.
What do you think are the biggest issues facing Littleton's mobility?
Well, I think you guys nail it, I was actually just reading the Transportation Master Plan, I think that covers it pretty well. You know, the lack of ability to kind of transfer between the different modes of transportation, the crisscrossing of, you know, arterials and, and streets that don't allow, you know, pedestrian traffic or bike traffic, things like that that kind of cut through the city and, and make it difficult to, you know, to, to cross and commute, but yeah, I think honestly, the Transportation Master Plan lays that out pretty nicely. Haven't gotten a chance to see what you guys propose as far as fixes yet, but hopefully, hopefully it's all.
Tell us how you think Littleton funds street maintenance and transportation.
I'm sure it's through taxes in some way, but I, I honestly don't know.
Transportation is a regional issue. What are the most important regional transportation issues facing Littleton and the region?
I think, you know, ability to use public transit, I think the future is in public transit and obviously that is a regional issue that involves more than just Littleton. You know, any other surrounding cities and suburbs obviously have to support those same transportation needs, but yeah, I think supporting public transit, pedestrian friendly and, you know, bike friendly byways is is kind of the most important things.
How do you define mobility?
Ability to get around, I guess.
If you had to list in order how the city should spend its transportation dollars, what would be your top three?
Hmm, that's tough, but you know, I think, I think we still need to support you know, automobile transit, that's obviously a big mode, but you know, I think competing right up there for number one would be public transit and, you know, building of bikeways and pathways for pedestrians, because I think that that really does fuel the growth of a, of a small city and it, it, you know, makes people feel at home. They want to, want to live there, they want to engage, you know, by walking around and, and then they end up spending money, I think is, is often how that works too, so it does fuel growth for the city.
Give us your top two ways to educate and engage the community about transportation issues.
Hmm, that's tough too. Two ways to engage, I mean, I think, you know, I've, I've actually learned quite a bit just seeing the signs up around the city as far as, you know, proposals for, you know, for new bikeways and things like that. I think, you know, mailers and local papers and publications and stuff, I think are, are good ways as well. And then, yeah, I think just signage around the city.
That is all the questions and it looks like you listed transportation and mobility board as both your first and second choices.
Did I? Okay.
Elliot, thank you, we appreciate you taking the time, I will pass it back to the mayor.
Hey Elliot, thanks, thanks for spending some time with us first of all, but should you not be selected for that particular board, are you willing to serve on another board that we thought you might qualify for if we were to ask you?
Yeah, I, I would and I think the only reason that I selected transportation only was I, it was just the only one that really appealed, but you know, the others certainly, if I, if you think that I could be helpful, I would certainly be happy to, so.
All right, well, really appreciate you calling in tonight, thanks for spending some time with us.
May we ask you, are you between the ages of 18 and 36 by April 1st?
I am not, unfortunately, my wife already, already told me about the, what is it, the future planning.
Next gen.
Next gen, yeah, yeah. Unfortunately, I, I miss it by two years now, so.
I feel your pain, man.
I know.
All right, well, thank you Elliot, have a good night.
Yeah, thanks, you too, bye guys.
All right. We are, Kelly, we're going to get to hear from you. All right, we are ready.
Ready for Andy?
We are down to two more folks, yes, we are.
Thank you.
Hi Andy, this is Jerry, if you could go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi there. How are you?
No, good. Good to hear and see you. Yes. We have about 10 minutes tonight. It goes pretty quick. We have a couple of things that you were signed up for, so 10 minutes will come real quick. So I'm going to turn it right over to Councilmember Milliman.
Okay.
Hi Andy, can you hear me?
I can, thanks.
All right, nice to meet you. So I'm the council liaison to South Metro Housing Options, which is Littleton's housing authority. So I have four questions for you. So there's a great deal of conversation around the need for affordable and attainable housing in Littleton. There's also a great deal of misunderstanding about these two programs. Could you please share your thoughts on how to best balance the need for this type of housing and the public's demand that it not be, quote, "in their backyard"?
And let me make sure, Councilmember, I heard you right. You said that between these two different types, you're saying affordable housing broadly?
Yeah, just affordable housing broadly. There's just, I think, yeah, broadly, yeah.
And the how to overcome NIMBY forces and things like that?
Yes.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's, that's the biggest barrier. That's the biggest challenge, right? I mean, there are all kinds of challenges to affordable housing and providing attainable and workforce housing. But of course, there are concerns of neighbors. And they're worried about all kinds of things that they think might come along with it, many of them unfounded. But, you know, people have experiences and they make some assumptions that aren't always fair. And so I think, you know, the South Metro Housing Options actually has a fantastic myths fact sheet on its website that I've used. I think it's great. There's a lot of good information in there. But I think the key probably really from the start is knowing your community needs, knowing your, your community members and what they need. And being able to create a communications and outreach strategy that's really inclusive of all the different voices, all the different needs. Because what doesn't get talked about as much is businesses that won't locate or expand here in certain areas because they can't get workers. Or people get upset about, you know, traffic congestion or, you know, whatever. And these are all systemic problems that come from not having enough of jobs-housing balance, frankly. Does that answer your question? Okay.
It did. Yes, thank you so much. So the second question is, this board manages public funds to support their mission. Have you had any experience in the handling of public funds? If so, please explain. And if not, please share your thoughts regarding the stewardship of public funds.
Okay. Well, I haven't really in this, in this way. I mean, I, I'm, you know, my team at work, we manage millions and millions of dollars of grant funds. And, and I guess I assume that's fairly similar. I mean, ultimately, we are, we need to make sure that we have all kinds of systems in place and structure in place to ensure things like transparency and fairness, you know, mission-directed sort of decision-making. And then, you know, accountability, frankly. So that's something I look forward to learning more about. But something I take very seriously as someone who's worked for the state for 25 years. It's very important. Once you lose that public trust from government, it's just so hard to regain it.
I would agree with that. Okay, thank you. So the third question is, shifting gears a little bit. So clearly homelessness is an issue that is a growing concern to communities, including Littleton. What are the, what are some of the ways a housing authority can support a community who is seeing an increase in this social concern?
Okay. Well, um, gosh, I wish I knew more, frankly, but I'm really interested in some of the tools that, you know, different communities are using. Like, one thing I think is really fascinating is using Community Land Trust-acquired properties. You know how it takes years to get a LI-Tech project through or to get started on a project? You can use that lot while that's all in process to create temporary housing for homeless or transitional housing. I'm interested in, you know, some of the projects around Denver, around my office, where they've converted vacant or underutilized properties to homes for the homeless. And, you know, it's been proven, there's tons of data to show that that actually saves the local government's money. It improves health options or health outcomes for residents. So I think there's probably a billion other things I don't know enough yet to say, but it sounds like there's lots of good programs and options out there.
Great, great. And I lied. Actually, I have two more questions.
Okay.
Sorry about that. I can't.
That's fine.
Um, so this board is very committed to providing people a way towards self-sufficiency and promoting dignity, diversity, and individuality. Could you please share your skills, share any skills that you think you could bring to this group that would support this mission?
Okay. Yeah, well, I, you know, I, I've spent most of my career in community development as it relates to planning and community economic development. So I feel like I have a pretty high-level, big-picture view of how the sustainability and resilience of communities really relies upon making sure people have jobs, housing, healthcare, and things like that. And just, you know, better quality of life makes things better for the whole community. And so, you know, hopefully I can bring some of that big-picture perspective, land use planning knowledge at a high level, especially as it relates to affordable housing. That's kind of an area that I like to focus in. And then on a more personal level, I've been volunteering lately during the pandemic because I just couldn't, I just felt like I needed to do something during the pandemic. And so I've been, I'm in the Rappahoe County Senior Shopper, you know, program. It's a small, really small thing, but it's something I can make time for. And the women that I shop for live in Inglewood, unfortunately, but, you know, not too far up the street. And I've learned a lot from them about just their personal experiences and how they budget their grocery money. And, you know, when their benefits are late, what kind of food choices and other choices they have to make. And I think that's been really rewarding for me and a great learning opportunity for me to understand, you know, how to work with people that have food scarcity issues and kind of what that, what that does to the way they think and plan and get through their day. And so it's, it's been, it's been good. And I hope that I've tried really hard to be thoughtful about their dignity and their self-sufficiency and respect through that, through that program.
Well, thank you for volunteering for that group. And so the last question is, what does a successful housing authority look like to you?
I think a successful housing authority does all the things that, you know, SMHO is doing now, really looking at different ways to help, different ways to help the community access housing through rental, through ownership. I love the new Habitat partnership, you know, really trying to get at the variety or the myriad needs in the community and addressing all of them. And thinking really inwardly about what it's doing to ensure equity and inclusion, especially inclusion in decision-making, which is really hard. And so I think, you know, housing authorities that do that and at the same time, think about how they can leverage their knowledge, their expertise, their stories from their clients to reach the rest of the community, to sort of raise the state of knowledge and understanding about, you know, what folks go through and how hard they work and, and the services and, and resources that we offer, how that makes our whole community better. I think that's, that's what I would want a housing authority to do. And I was really happy to see the commitment, I think that was in the comp plan, that the city was going to rely on the SMHO for feedback on the development regs and standards and process. And I think that's great. That's really smart.
Well, thank you for answering all those great, those are great answers. Thank you so much. So I'm going to turn you over to Councilmember Pam Grove since it looks like you had your second option as Historic Preservation Board.
I did. Thank you.
Sure.
Hi Andy.
And Kelly used up all your time Pam, so let's try to get in three, four minutes would be good.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you for your service on HPB. What have you enjoyed most about being on HPB?
You know, I have to say lately, it's really actually the, the group that's on the board and the staff. We have some pretty amazing folks with a really tremendous depth of expertise. I mean, it's kind of startling, frankly. It's been great. And the mid-century modern mile, the Littleton Boulevard, that was a pretty cool project. I was excited to see, and just, I had not really, how do I say? I hadn't really fully appreciated those, some of those buildings until we got into it. And then really, you know, that helped me see them a little deeper, a little better for what they are. I'm proud to say we have some pretty amazing treasures.
And another question, what if anything would you change about HPB?
Oh, would I change about the board? Nothing. I like that, I, I love that we put so much investment and money into supporting our businesses. That is really the Main Street model. The way to save the buildings is to keep thriving businesses in them because then they can invest in them and maintain them. And so I think that's, that's a fantastic program that the city has. I'm really proud about that. And I, I like that we try to be flexible. I like that, I like that the council is relying on HPB to weigh in on standards and the code and things like that. I think it's great and we have special projects that are going on. It's a really full board.
Thank you. I'm going to turn it back over to Jerry.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And, you know, Kelly only got one chance to ask questions tonight, so she maximized her time. So Andy, thank you very much for serving on the Historic Preservation. And you're absolutely right. This is one of the finest groups of folks we have on that particular board. And I think right now is an important time for the city of Littleton to have that, that board. So thank you very much for spending some time with us.
All right. Thank you. Have a good night.
Have a good night. All right.
Are you ready for Donna?
And Donna is our last one. So we are ready. Hi, hi Donna, this is Jerry. If you could go ahead and unmute yourself. Hey, there you go. All right. Hello, how you doing tonight?
Fine, thank you. How are you all?
Great. Thank you for joining us. So we're going to take about 10 minutes. So we're going to get right into it. Not a lot of small talk, so don't take it personal.
Okay.
All right. I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Fay. Councilmember Fay can unmute herself. That would be great.
Hi Donna.
Hello.
I have some questions for you. First one is, do you have any concerns regarding your ability to perform the duties of this board as laid out in the Powers and Duties Document?
I do not. I have no concerns. I have the bandwidth now. I'm, I'm a frequent, I'm a, I'm a recent empty nester, which is why I'm excited to explore opportunities for having some civic involvement, which I, in the past, I did not have the bandwidth to do. So I have no concerns about that.
Do you have a background in construction? And if no, could you share what you will do that will be of value to this board?
Yes, I do not have a direct background in construction. But I believe that the skills that I have grown in my career would be applicable to sitting on a board or commission. I've worked in software development for over 20 years in various roles. And for the last several years, I've been in a business analyst position, which means that I bridge the gap between the business people who want a piece of software or system built or enhanced, and the engineers and developers who actually build it. And to be successful in that role, one needs to have a very even personality because what the business people want and what the engineers can build do not always align exactly. It also requires approaching each problem or each request without any preconceived ideas and being able to look at what's requested and what is, you know, what's, what is, what, what can be done to meet that request and trying to come to, to an agreement, you know, and make, to come to an agreement about that. I have also, in my roles, been fortunate to work with subject matter experts, which I think would be very applicable to the Board of Adjustment, where you have the staff members, the planners who provide the board with very detailed analysis and explain to them about the request or resolution. In my current role, for instance, I'm in the mortgage industry and I've never worked as a loan officer or processor or worked directly for a bank or a lender. So I work with a lot of people who have done that though. And I know how to take their input as subject matter experts and apply it appropriately to this decision at hand. And I'm very used to respecting that type of input and working with those types of people. So those are the types of skills I believe that would, that would be applicable in these situations.
Okay. Are you familiar with Littleton building codes? And if not, what would you do to get up to speed?
I am not familiar with them other than the few times that we have had contractors in our home who needed to, who needed to request permits and do something like installing windows was the last thing where they had to get a permit for that. I would, I would look to, I would, I would start looking into the codes themselves and look at the, begin by looking at the outlines of them and reading them. Maybe, yeah, just looking at the outline to begin with and delving then down into each section. I haven't searched for that specifically on Littleton, Littleton Government website, but I have found, anytime I've needed something from that website, I have found it very easy to find. I think everything there is very transparent. And being able to do my own research is something that I really pride myself on. So that's where I would start.
Well, that's good to hear. Per our city attorney, when the board is making decisions, we use the term quasi-judicial. It means that the board is acting like a judge. As we all want judges to be impartial, we do not allow board members to talk to others about an application prior to its hearing. What are your thoughts regarding quasi-judicial decision-making? And how do you see yourself working within a board governed by these rules?
I would not have a problem not discussing things. My, my husband's an attorney, so he can, you know, he can never discuss a lot of things with me about his clients. And in another life, many years ago, I worked for the CIA. So, you know, I could tell you what I did back then, but, but so I'm, I'm, I'm not a big talker. I'm not a gossiper. I don't even know things that can be known in my own company in terms of gossip in people's personal lives. So that would not be a problem for me at all.
Last question. This board makes decisions about grants and waivers to the city building codes based on specific criteria. Tell us about your decision-making process.
Well, can I, if I may, can I interject a question? Because I'm curious about that. How much ahead of time, I mean, or do the board members get to see the resolutions or the requests ahead of the actual meetings?
Mr. Mayor, would you answer that?
Yes, you'll get it, typically you'll get it before the weekend. The staff will put the information out so that you have at least the weekend to look at it.
Okay, okay. Well, then I would, I would go, I would go look at the place. I would go look at the address or the property in question. I would review the, you know, whatever the piece, whatever the zoning code is that they're wanting an exception to, or whatever the land usage is that they want an exception for. I would definitely investigate that. I would want to look at it myself. I would definitely investigate that. I would want to look at it myself. And then I would go through and read what the staff people said about it. And I think this is an area where I could provide a, a little bit of a unique asset because I live in the Trailmark neighborhood, which is that enclave that's separated from the rest of Littleton off of South Wadsworth. So, you know, I don't drive in, I don't see the rest of Littleton every ti, every time I drive my car somewhere. And I think when you're, when you see things every day, sometimes that stuff can kind of, it starts to blend into the background. I know recently I, my younger child was home because of COVID, and she's a huge slob. And it wasn't until after she left that I realized our house was a mess. And, you know, I didn't, I just started not to even see it. So I think if, you know, for me to go look at something for a, a resident, you know, request for a variance, it's not gonna be a corner that I drive by every day, most likely. It's probably not gonna be a storefront that I've passed twenty times over the last month. So I'll be looking at it with fresh eyes and coming out with a fresh perspective.
That's all the questions I have.
Great. Donna, I'm gonna turn it over to Mayor Protem Scott Millen. He has some questions for you.
Okay.
After he mutes himself, we'll hear from him as well.
Anyway, thank you, Mayor. Hi, Donna. A lot of the questions for the Licensing Authority are more or less identical to the ones that Councilmember Fay just asked you. So let me ask you just the ones that are different, starting with, the Licensing Authority requires decisions that may substantially affect a business. Describe the process you will use to make decisions that could have both economic and social impact on the community.
First, I would review, I would, I want to look at the, the background of the, of the, the comp, you know, the restaurant or the bar, whoever, the entity that's making the request for the license. I would want to see, you know, have they had experience with, if it was a liquor license, for example, have they had experience with liquor licenses in the past? Do they have other establishments? Have they had violations in the past, perhaps? I just, I would want to know the background of the entity making the request. And again, I would go look at the, at the neighborhood. What is this location? Has there been an establishment here previously that had a liquor license? Or would this be introducing something new into the area? And if I'm, I, my understanding is that I think, aren't they required? Or don't they try to get some, like petitions or signatures from people in the area, residents who live near that area to show that people are, would be okay with the license being granted? Is that, isn't that part of the process?
I honestly don't know.
Mayor Protem?
Yes, ma'am.
I could answer that if you like.
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you.
Donna, yes, they need to prove needs and desires of the adult inhabitants of the neighborhood. That neighborhood is defined by staff. Currently, it's the clerk's office, myself, and that neighborhood is based on similar businesses that have gone into that area requesting the same type of license in the past. It does not necessarily have to be signatures or a petition. The state just requires that they prove needs and desires. Petitions are the easiest way to do that. But if they can come up with something else that can show the authority that the adult inhabitants want the license and don't feel there are enough outlets in the area, then that's taken into consideration.
All right. Thank you, Colleen. Scott, did you get all that?
That was, that was an incredible answer, Colleen. Thank you. Give us some insight into how you work with others with whom you may not agree.
Oh, well, for starters, in my, in my business or my company where I work, I try, if there are disagreements, I try to not have a, have a communication with them via email. If at all possible, I, you know, talking is usually better just because there is, there's, there's tone. There's just a lot of things that may not always be communicated well through an email. So if, that's my first, that's my first thing. If things seem like they're not, we're just not understanding each other, I will try to, if it's not happening via email or even via messaging, I'll try to say, can we, you know, can we just stop and talk about it? I'm, I don't know if you guys, if there's rules about board members or commission members, you know, speaking to each other outside the meetings. If that's the case and you're talking about, you know, interaction within a meeting, I like to say that I'm a huge fan of parliamentary procedure, and I love to follow that type of procedure. And I think that that can do a lot to kind of tamp down disagreements that may come up during those meetings.
Mayor, how much time do we have?
If you have more, go ahead. She's our last interview.
Talk a bit about how you discern information from opposing sources to eventually produce a judgment.
I, I investigate, I investigate both of them. If in my current position, if the business side says, you know, our customers want X, well, then I might go talk to product support to find out, are they, are our customers really having a problem with this? Do they really need X? And then I'll also talk to the engineers to say, well, how expensive would it to be? This is what, this is what the business side says they need. Is it really expensive to build this? Or do you, as engineers, do you know of another way that we could solve this problem that maybe isn't exactly what the business is asking for, but it would still solve the, the need that the customers have, that a customer needed the business explaining to us? So it's really just looking at what both sides are asking for and then, you know, sending, giving questions back to them and trying to fully understand where each side is coming from.
Have you read the Powers and Duties document for the Licensing Authority? And do you have any concerns regarding your ability to perform these duties?
I have not read it, but I do not have concerns in terms of being able to approach questions with an open mind, having no preconceived ideas about things and in, and in terms of time commitment.
And I gotta ask, what did you do for the CIA?
Thank you, Scott. Thank you.
Well, in one of my, in, I did several different things, but a lot of it had to do with open source intelligence. You may think, people think of the CIA, they think of all the secret stuff and spies. But in reality, even back then, back in my time before social media, you could glean a lot of intelligence about a company or country based on their, their regular media, newspapers, magazines, television broadcasts. So I worked in an office that did a lot of monitoring and translating and disseminating of that type of information.
Well, Donna, thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you, guys.
All right. Hey, Donna, thank you very much for spending some time with us tonight. And also, if you don't get your first or second choice, and we think you may qualify for another board or commission, would you be willing to consider that?
Oh, yes, I would.
Excellent. Excellent. All right. Well, thank you so much for spending some time with us.
Okay. Thank you, guys. Have a good evening.
You have a good night.
Okay. Bye.
All right. Thank you. All right. That was it for tonight, Council. This is so fun. I want to do this a couple more nights at least. All right. So we'll, we'll catch you all, we'll catch you all tomorrow. Thank you, Colleen.
Good night.